Hello and welcome to CNET's 2023 election coverage. I'm Jeff Rushden of StateCollege.com and today we're profiling the race for State College Area School Board of Directors. And with me today is Democratic incumbent candidate Amy Bader. Amy, thanks for joining us.
Sure. Glad to be here.
So Amy, to start, tell us a little bit about your background and why you're running for another term on school board.
Sure, so I've served two terms thus far, served several years as Vice President of the Board. And the biggest reason is a commitment to public education. I'm really concerned that we maintain high-quality public education in our community. I'm a result of public education myself and I just know how transformative it can be for a lot of students. And so I'm just eager to continue that work.
What do you think are the biggest challenges facing the State College School District right now?
The biggest ones are going to be really staffing issues. We're facing a major staffing issue in terms of support staff, so largely bus drivers and what we call paraprofessionals, which are like aides in teachers' classrooms. Those have been really difficult to fill. There's a national shortage of bus drivers. We're dealing with issues about pay and it's a funky schedule for somebody to have, so they can be tough to fill. And then I think the other issue will be a pending teacher shortage, and we know that's going to also be a nationwide problem. I'm really pleased that I was part of the negotiating team for the recent contract agreement that we made with the Teacher Association, and we feel like we've worked hard to place the district in a place to be really competitive in attracting new teachers and also retaining the teachers that we have. But it's still, the pool is really shrinking and so that's going to be a challenge.
Book bans in schools have been a topic of discussion nationally for the past few years. What's your view on how the State College School District manages the books that it makes available and is there anything you think needs to change about that?
Sure, so there's a pretty established process that our librarians adhere to. They are highly trained professionals and they're trained not only in the value of variety of literature, but what's appropriate for different age groups. So I have a faith in their expertise as well as teachers when they create their classroom libraries. The district also has a process. If there are books that parents in the community feel are inappropriate, there's a well-established process where they can call attention to that. There's committees that meet that include parents on there to review and decide whether that should be pulled or not pulled and if there's a question about that. So I think, you know, on a national level, there are people saying that there's sexually explicit language in children's classrooms and that's just not the case in our district. You know, our young students don't have access to those things. Now, are there some books in our high school that do contain some content store? But, you know, these are books sometimes that are memoirs. They're, you know, sometimes from refugees who have experienced war-torn countries and we, you know, that's history that we need our students to know and understand. So I, you know, I think our librarians are geared to determine the value of that literature and I think they do a good job of what they do.
In general, how do you think the district has done in the past few years of involving parents in decision-making, but also letting teachers and staff do the jobs that they're trained and experienced in?
It's a tricky balance, right? So I think it's about relationships. We talk a lot at the district level about the importance of relationships, particularly, you know, the most important one being teachers and students together, but also, you know, within staff, within the university and then, or university, sorry, within the schools and then as well with the community. So I think the district tries hard to be proactive, but I think we're a big district and I, and I think we know that like when parents feel things are going well and they're happy with what's going on in classrooms, you know, they've got their own life that they've got to deal with and they're mainly focused on maybe some individual needs of their own student. And oftentimes it's not until something major is going on, like changing the school day, which we did, or building a new building, that parents really get engaged and tune in. And I understand that. Before I was on the Board, I was one of those parents too. I didn't always know everything that was going on in the district. I think the district does try to make information available widely on our website. We do, you know, send out communication to parents when big things are happening. I think just like so much of the world today though, there's an information glut, right? It's a fire hose in our mouth all the time of everything going on in the world and also in our community. So I understand that parents sometimes feel frustrated that they didn't know what was going on, but I think the district tries hard to strike a balance and not overwhelming parents with information. There's already a lot of struggles. Sometimes principals are sending out information about their buildings and, and parents aren't always opening those emails. So, so it's a tricky balance to strike, but we, I think the district tries hard and it can always get better.
Like you mentioned, State College, especially within Center County, is a large school district and it's a geographically and demographically diverse one. How do you make sure that you're attuned to the needs of different communities within the larger State College School District community?
Yeah, that's a great question. In the last eight years I've been on the district, there's been more efforts in our strategic planning and comprehensive planning to build equity as a baseline and a foundation of all that we do. And part, a big part of equity is addressing what you asked about, is recognizing different subgroups within our community and what their needs are. We know that a lot of kids in State College do really well and are very successful. And so we need to focus on some groups that are having struggles and difficulties, whether that be because they're, you know, we have a growing migrant and refugee population here in the community. We've seen poverty escalate since in the time that I've been on the Board significantly. So we're working, you know, we've created new roles to try and help support certain of those families. You know, we're really digging down into data more on those groups so we can really try to figure out and address what different subgroups may need in terms of making them better and making them successful.
As I know you know, the district is doing a district-wide facilities master plan and obviously Park Forest Middle School is going to be a big part of that. Are there other facilities needs you see throughout the district that you think need to be, are going to need to be addressed?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we've already been talking a little bit about a capacity need at the elementary level. It's primarily focused at Mountain Nittany Elementary, but there are actually some pockets at Spring Creek and Easterly Parkway. So there's a building project that's going on in parallel to address those needs along with the district-wide facility master plan. Part of that master plan will also though include athletic fields and playgrounds. Those are areas that we've wanted to kind of really get at and we started tackling playgrounds before COVID with the new elementary schools. We went through a whole process about playgrounds and we really want to see equity through, across our elementary schools. Some elementary buildings just don't have high-quality playgrounds. And so I'd like to see that be, you know, it's on the slate as part of the facilities plan and I think that will be an important one to address. And sustainability is also going to be a big part of that, that master planning is, you know, we've built some buildings that are lead platinum and lead gold, which is really great achievement in terms of sustainability, but we would still want to keep evaluating how we can move forward and improve.
Do you believe that a teacher or other staff member should be obligated to inform a parent if a child confides or otherwise expresses that they have a different gender identity or transgender?
Yeah, so this is a big question nationally and it's one we addressed a couple of years ago in the district by passing a gender expansive and transgender policy that spelled out, you know, because we heard from staff they, that they were uncertain about how to approach these issues. And so that policy was put in place and it has procedures aligned to it. And I think that what we have to keep in mind is that children that fall in this category, transgender children, can have rates of upwards of 80% of suicidal thoughts and 50% of suicidal attempts. So these are children that have some really delicate situations. And so for the most part, the intent is to work with families and parents and that's generally the case. There's, parents are generally really engaged in what's going on with these students. There are very rare instances where students either are just not emotionally ready to talk to their parents or there's sometimes a safety concern. And so in rare cases, there are procedures where counselors will work through a gender support plan with a student and the goal though is always to get parents involved. So there's no conspiracy to keep parents away from their kids or to hide things from parents. The big issue is making sure that kids are safe and we, we keep in mind those risks that, that the high risk these students have for suicide.
Do you support or oppose school voucher or school choice legislation and why?
So it's not a decision I get to make as a Board member, but philosophically, no, I don't support school vouchers. I think with the fair funding case that recently occurred, it's been shown that the funding in Pennsylvania is not constitutional. There are major issues that the legislature really has to address, but it's also a bigger federal issue. The way we fund schools in America is not ideal. When we rely on property taxes, it creates inequities across the state and affluent areas have access to more funds and better resources for kids. And we know funding and resources impacts outcomes. It's just they're intimately tied together. And so we've got to really look at, you know, the federal issues as well. They still haven't fully funded special ed funding, even though they promised to fund up to 40% of special ed costs when IDA was passed. So, so there's big issues all along and I just don't think vouchers gets us anywhere close to where we need to be to fund public schools appropriately.
Should there be changes to funding formulas or oversight for charter schools and why or why not?
So in my time on the Board, we've learned a lot about charter schools. There's been a lot of discussion about reform. And yeah, there's some really baked in problems with the funding. One for cyber charters, it was never really set up. It was just simply mimicked what brick and mortar charters were and they just don't have the same costs. It's just not fair to give them the same tuition when they don't have similar costs of a brick and mortar school. And then additionally, you know, the formula that's used for brick and mortar charter schools, it includes some costs that, that charters aren't required to provide. Like we have our own CTC Center for State College Area School District, which a lot of school districts don't have. That's a huge expense and the money we spend on that gets factored into our tuition that we pay to charter schools. So it's, it's, it's just, we would like it to be comparable and appropriate. It's not that we want charter schools to close, but we think that the funding should be fairly calculated.
Has the district, in your view, been responsible with taxpayer money and is there any way that you think it can improve in that regard?
Yeah, so taxes is always a big issue and, and people talk about budgeting. I know some other candidates in this race have commented that if State College Area School District had stuck to inflation only in their budgeting, you know, that they would have saved X million, a million sub dollars. And the challenge is, is that inflation isn't the only factor we have to deal with. 80% of the district's costs are salaries and benefits. So I just think that's a really uninformed comment to make because the issue is healthcare has not been escalating at the same rate as inflation and we have to pay our staff and we have to provide our full-time employees healthcare. So that, it's just not feasible, right? To only depend on inflation. Additionally, we had 70% of the voters pass a referendum to build our new high school and so, you know, in that pocket of years, obviously the taxes were raised above and beyond and the, the community approved that. We're the last district to ever be able to pass that. And finally, you know, we are constrained by the Act One Index that's, that's the state legislature has passed and that index is an inflationary index. So the school districts can't go above that in terms of raising taxes without, you know, having special exceptions. And we've been below the Act One Index the majority of the time I've been on the Board and we wouldn't have been able to do certain things like add more counselors after COVID. We wouldn't have been able to launch an international baccalaureate program if we stuck to inflation. So, so we try hard to keep taxes down. I pay taxes. I don't want to pay more taxes either, but we also want to make sure that our students are well cared for and that they're well educated.
We're at the end of our time, so I'll give you this opportunity to share anything else you would like to with the voters.
Sure, I, you know, I really, I care a lot about our teachers and our students in our community and I really appreciate the hard work they do and especially after COVID, the dedication that they've shown. And I'd like to continue to be part of that process to support them. And so that's why I'm running.
Well, thanks so much for joining us, Amy.
Happy to.
We've been talking with Amy Bader, Democratic incumbent candidate for State College Area School Board of Directors. All candidates in this race have been invited to take part in a CNET interview. Election Day is Tuesday, November 7th, and you can also vote by mail. For more information, visit CenterCountyVotes.gov or contact the Center County Office of Elections. I'm Jeff Rushden of StateCollege.com. Thanks for joining us and please be sure to vote. I'm Jeff Rushden of StateCollege.com and today we're profiling the race for the State College Area School District Board of Directors. With me now is Republican candidate Nathan Bish. Nathan, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
So Nathan, to start, can you tell us a little bit about your background and why you decided to run for school board?
So my background's kind of interesting. I've not been part of public education, but I've been around it my entire life. My mother was a high school English teacher and journalism. My father was a high school principal and my wife is currently an administrator at a local school district. So I've been around it my entire life, without being in it my entire life. We have a fourth grader and a sixth grader currently in State College School District and I've attended a fair amount of school board meetings in the last couple of years just to kind of see what's going on. We moved back to the area in 2016. My wife and I both went to school here and just to get to understand what is going on, you know, when we send our kids to school. And I quickly learned that there's a lot of great things in this district. District's ranked very high for, for obvious reasons. Academics are extremely high. What I am concerned about though is the current makeup of the Board being 9-0 with one ideology and there's not a lot of diversity and, and different voices heard. So that's, that's probably my main reason.
All right. What do you think are the biggest challenges facing the State College School District right now?
The biggest challenges right now, I look back, I think the district hired a DEI director, you know, five or six, five years ago possibly. During that time, obviously as a country, as a locale, we, we started to separate, separate student groups, separate teachers, separate political groups, separate religious groups. I see, especially at the, at the high school level, there's a lot of division right now. There's a lot of isolation. There's a lot of not bringing kids together, in my opinion. You know, if, if a kid has a problem, obviously we need to work with that. Everybody's an individual, but the more we segregate kids and really talk about their differences rather than what's common with, with everybody, bring everybody together.
Book bans have been, in schools have been a topic of national discussion in, in the recent years. What's your view on how the State College Area School District manages the books that it makes available and is there anything about that that you would change?
Well, I could tell you, I'm not for book banning at all. I think we should have more books, not, not less books. I do however feel that books need to be age-appropriate. You know, the content, we rate movies, we rate video games. We should rate books and not based on solely what the author says is appropriate because as a parent, you know, I may choose to send a nine-year-old to a PG movie. I may not choose to send a nine-year-old to a PG movie depending on what the content is. So more books, not less books, age-appropriate books. As far as how State College curates the books, not 100% sure at this point. As far as I know, they get recommendations based on topics and they kind of buy groups of books at a time, not necessarily reading the entire content of them. At some point that happens, but you know, I, I think the district has done a, a great job. I think there's six million books or so in publication right now. I mean, certainly we can't have them all. There has to be some choices at some point and I do think overall they do a very good job.
How do you think the district has done with involving parents in, in decision-making in general while also, you know, allowing teachers and staff to do the jobs that they're trained and experienced in?
I think the district is doing a better job getting parents involved. Curtis Johnson, the, the new superintendent has, has done a, he's really stepped up in, in that aspect. Danielle Yoder's Assistant Superintendent of Elementary and Jonathan Butcher, the new Assistant Superintendent of Secondary. The three of them is our three leaders have done a, done a better job at that. I can tell you however, I've been part of the State College School District Strategic Planning Committee a year and a half ago and again this year, it's a three-year plan. The one a year and a half ago, I was the only parent that didn't have either district ties or special interest group ties through the university. So that was a little dis, disheartening, but again, the administration leadership has changed since, since that one. We just finished our third and final meeting of the next three-year plan two days ago and I was one of about three out of a room of 50. So we're getting better. I think that the word diversity, you know, we, we tend to think of diversity as skin color or religious backgrounds. This is a very diverse community. You know, there's from, from the western reaches of Ferguson Township to the Borough Estate College. I mean, you have polar opposite mentality, thought processes. I think the district needs to do a better job of making sure all voices are heard, not one side or selecting them based on a group. I mean, everybody in the district pays taxes, so regardless if they have children or not, I, I think their voices need to be heard and I do think they need to continue to make these committees more diverse as we move forward.
Like you said, State College School District, especially within Center County, is a, is a pretty large and diverse school district. How, how do you go about making sure that you're attuned to and addressing the needs of all those different communities within the larger school district community?
One of the things, this would probably be number one or two if, if I was elected to the Board. The, the Board in the district, the district I think does a better job than the current school board does. You know, a, a three-time-a-year coffee in the morning doesn't do it. We, you gotta, you gotta find a way to engage the community. People are busy. I mean, two-parent families, you've got school, you've got two jobs, you've got multiple practices depending on, on your kid's age. It's hard to attend school board meetings and quite honestly, they're not the most interesting thing sometimes for community members to attend. I, as a Board member, I believe it's your duty to not only make policy, but get an accurate feeling, feedback, information from the voting electorate, parents, you know, if there are town hall meetings where we can have open discussion, I think that would be wonderful. Again, the, the Board meetings offer you a time to have a public comment, but it's a, it's a three-minute statement with no response. I know they say email allboard@scasd.org. Sometimes you'll get a response. Very often you don't get a response from all the Board members. You know, there's a couple that do an excellent job at it. There's a couple that don't respond at all. So, and I know that can be overwhelming. It's a volunteer position. They have jobs, they have lives and I'm sure they get inundated with questions sometimes. But getting the true feedback and thoughts and ideas of the community as a whole, I think the current Board and District have not done a good job in recent history with that.
The district is doing a district-wide facilities master plan, which I think it's clear that Park Forest Middle School is going to be a big part of that. Are there any specific facilities needs that you see across the school district that you feel need to be addressed?
I mean, Park Forest, it's, it's a dinosaur of a school right now. I mean, that, that's an obvious expense that needs to happen. The, probably the most concerning thing right now, my youngest daughter goes to Mountain Nittany. They kind of pushed the expansion of Mountain Nittany Elementary School right to the front with the current consultant group without asking for, request for a proposal for a new consultant group. And I'm not saying the current one is necessarily the wrong one, but they kind of skipped over that step for expeditious reasons. Instead of looking at maybe some temporary solutions where you could bring trailers on site, you could reorganize the elementary map of the district. Coral Street and Ferguson are, are not nearly at capacity. There's some room to shift, shift some current students around. But you know, we're looking at, I believe the last number I heard is about a $20 million expansion for, for a school that was renovated 12 years ago. So that's a, it's a pretty big expense at the taxpayers', you know, expense.
Do you believe a teacher or other staff member should be required to inform a parent if their student confides or otherwise expresses a different gender identity or that they're transgender?
100%. If, if, if that student is under 18 years old, they're, as a parent, they're your children. The school's a partnership. The school should not be keeping secrets from parents.
Do you think the district has been a good steward of taxpayer dollars in recent years and is there any way you think they could improve in that regard?
Listen, you know, I have a, I have a little different thought process than the current nine Board members. You know, there's a mentality on the Board, I think, now that you can't spend enough on education. Education is extremely important. If it wasn't, I wouldn't be, be running for this office. But you have to have a budget. You have to have a realistic budget. We raised taxes, they raised taxes this year, the maximum 4.5%. We have gotten some federal money over the last couple of years, some state money that have been, the, the task that they delineated that money to be allocated for had a lot of maintenance tails to it. So they hired staff members with it. So you know, that, those one-time grants or, or gifts from the state or the federal government, as I, as I would say, they go away at some point. So all of a sudden now you gotta find room in the budget when that goes away to continue covering those costs. So the answer to your question, I, we shouldn't have to raise taxes at the maximum rate. Are taxes going to have to go up at some point? Absolutely, but not at the rate they're going.
Do you think there should be any changes to charter school funding formulas and oversight and why or why not?
I think we do a pretty good job right now with, with that. You know, I, I, from the virtual standpoint, I think that, you know, this district does a very good job of offering the, the typical, you know, education we think of, public education. They also offer the Delta Program. They also offer Virtual Academy. Dr. Downs does a great job with, with both of those. We have some K through eight charter schools in this district who I think both do a decent job. They offer some very unique opportunities for kids that maybe our district doesn't. I think charter schools have a purpose, have a, have a place. I think they have to offer something different to, to be relative, in my personal opinion.
Well, we're just about out of time, so I'll give you a chance here to share anything else you would like to with the voters.
No, I, I appreciate everybody listening. Please vote November 7th or before November 7th. Nathan Bish, a part of a larger group, United for SCASD. We have some wonderful candidates. If you like some change and some diverse forces on the Board, please vote for us.
Well, thanks so much for joining us today, Nathan.
Thanks, Jeff.
We've been talking with Nathan Bish, Republican candidate for State College Area School Board. All candidates in this race have been invited to take part in a CNET interview. Election Day is Tuesday, November 7th, or you can vote by mail. For more information, contact the Center County Office of Elections or visit Center CountyVotes.gov. I'm Jeff Rushden of StateCollege.com. Thanks for joining us and please be sure to vote. I'm Jeff Rushden of StateCollege.com and today we're profiling the race for State College Area School Board of Directors. With me today is Democratic candidate Ann Demo. Ann, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
So Ann, to start, can you tell us a little bit about your background and why you decided to run for school board?
Sure. So I actually did my PhD at Penn State and then I left State College. I taught at Vanderbilt and Syracuse and then came back to Tiju, Penn State. My family deals with some disabilities and so our family's been really connected to special education, in particular paraprofessionals. And at a certain point around 2018, I decided to step away from university life and actually give back to the wonderful people and school district that's transformed our family's life and I became a paraprofessional. And I worked for basically two years through the pandemic and it was life-changing, transformational and I thought that I could now potentially give back in a different way as a school board member since I have a student in the district and have experienced the wonders of SCASD classrooms.
What do you think are the biggest challenges facing State College Area School District right now?
Sure. I would say that obviously I would say that obviously with inflation, this complexity of managing the imperative of careful financial stewardship while also needing to address incredible student needs, particularly in terms of mental health, those, that kind of tension between those two imperatives, I think, are a real challenge. I also think that if you've paid attention at all to the attack on public education, it's impossible to not feel that teachers are also feeling under attack. And I know from talking to them that they feel demoralized. And so, I think, you know, we have like all these ads about getting school bus drivers and paraprofessionals, and so the staffing shortage is not helped by the attack on public education. And so, I really feel really closely wanting to do what we can to talk frequently about the expertise of our teachers and how much they do to not just transform our students' lives, but our community. SCASD is, I think, the fourth biggest employer, so it does a lot for our community. We just got an email about families who might need Thanksgiving meals, and so it's really doing so much for the community. So, in the end, it's that imperative of financial stewardship and dealing with student needs and also talking about the expertise of our teachers.
Book bans in schools have been a topic of national discussion in recent years. What's your view on how State College Area manages the books that it makes available? And is there anything you think needs to be changed about that?
I feel very passionate about this. My son volunteers at the library, and I was in the back of the library supporting students while book talks were given. They talk in middle school about reading emergencies where you always should have a book in case there's downtime, so you're not reading, you know, looking at your phone, but you're reading literature. The former Mount Nittany Middle School librarian recently had an editorial in the CDT, and so I'm going to defer to her expertise. There's one paragraph in particular where she talks about the importance of the choice to read. And so, I feel like we want to give families as much choice as possible on what their students can read. Maybe it's not going to be good for your student, but that doesn't mean it's not going to be life-changing for another student. And so, I mean, the training our librarians and our teachers, our ELA teachers go through to be able to choose the just right book. So, I am going to say that I support our librarians, I support our teachers, I think that families deserve choices to read, and that's really something about a parent and a child. My son, I asked him what he thought, and he was like, "Well, if I don't like the book or you don't like the book, I won't read it." You know, so I think it's a conversation with families so that just because I don't like a book doesn't mean your child isn't going to find it opening of their world. And so, again, I encourage everyone to look at that editorial because that is someone who spent 20 years as a librarian, opening up the imaginations of our students' lives.
In general, how do you think the district has done involving families in decision-making while also letting teachers and staff do the jobs that they're trained and experienced in?
Sure. I mean, I strongly believe that all students benefit when parents are super involved. And so, parents need clear and timely communication. As a parent, I just got the notice that the district is using a well-regarded communication app, I think it's called Parent Square. And so, I think they're doing everything they can to try and make, to streamline communication so you don't have to go to multiple places, so it makes it easier for teachers so they don't have to go to multiple places. And so, I think that as technology changes, trying to find that just right communication mode is something, I'm hoping that Parent Square is it. That's why I think it's important, everyone on our slate has parents in the district, I mean, has students in the district. And so, we understand, like, when we get those notices, what's going to be easier for us, or if we accidentally forget and to do the weather app and get a 5:30 call instead of a 6:30 call, that's important to know as well. But more seriously, I think there's evidence of strong communication where parents are giving feedback from, I guess, maybe July until August. In the school board meetings, one parent came forward with concerns about surveys and how they were handled by the district. I believe she started doing public comment maybe in July, and then by September, the district had revised the policy. That is an example of parental involvement that's important and that the district responded to. I mean, I think even at one meeting, the last meeting, I don't know, it was maybe the end of September or beginning of October, she even came and thanked the board for their responsiveness. That is a system that works, that's just literally from three months ago. So, it is important. As a parent, you want it to be streamlined, you want it to be timely. As teachers, you don't want to have to send out one thing on Google, another thing on Canvas, or now Synergy. And so, I think I really appreciate the effort to make it easier for teachers and parents with this new Parent Square. So, fingers crossed.
Do you think the district has been responsible with taxpayer money in recent years? And do you think there's any areas that it could improve in that regard?
Well, I mean, it's quite hard because we have an unfair funding system in Pennsylvania that I can talk about later. We just, in the new budget, there is an increase of 4.1%, which I think averages out to $160 per resident or household. And so, the issue, though, is that if you look at the past five years, we didn't raise taxes for, I think, 2021 and 2122. So, across those five years, there's only been a 2% increase. It's really difficult with inflation and also the rising healthcare costs to try, this is where the tension between fiscal stewardship and taking care of our teachers. I mean, our budget, the teacher salaries or teacher and staff salaries and benefits account for 71%. We need to be paying our teachers and staff well because what happens when we don't? We don't have people, you know, in the crossing guards, or we don't have the bus drivers, and we need those positions filled. I'm really worried about the decline of students going into the teaching profession. And so, that 71% is a really important percentage. If we had fun, fair funding, I mean, there was that court case in 2023, February, and we're still waiting to see how that's going to be resolved. Hopefully, that could take some of the pressure off of property taxes.
Do you believe a teacher or other staff member should be required to inform the parents of a student who confides or otherwise expresses a different gender identity or that they're transgender?
I, there was an ad by our opponents that I felt really decontextualized the policy that you're talking about. And so, I want to be very clear about what that policy says and what it doesn't say. So, if you actually look at the policy, which was developed in consultation with Children's Hospital of Phil-, of Pennsylvania, CHOP, it begins by saying, "Parents typically are the ones to come to the school district about those kinds of concerns. In the rare instance where a student were to come to a teacher or a trusted adult, then that team, the school district team, addresses whatever fear they have, whatever concern they have." But if you look at the policy, they work then toward parental notification. So, to indicate otherwise is misinformation and really not the kind of careful deliberative talk we need about our schools. This, I think, is a really important pointing to a care and data-driven and fully contextualizing policy.
We have about 30 seconds left, so I'll give you this opportunity to share anything else you would like to with the voters.
Yeah, I mean, I think we are parents of students in the district. I have experience working in the schools. We take very seriously the role of fiscal stewardship, and, I mean, we've been working hard to be super clear about what is on the right track in SCASD schools and then how we can keep on the right track. We have a blue ribbon school announced this year. We have, now we're in the top percents in Pennsylvania of schools. And so, I want us to not lose track of what is, we are doing right. As we address, as this public comment example gives you, we had a situation where there could have been something that needed to be addressed. A parent came forward, the district responded, and now we're all better for it. That is the kind of communication that Slate for State and I desperately want for our students and our staff.
Great. Well, thank you so much for joining us today, Ann.
Thank you.
We've been talking with Ann DeMoe, Democratic candidate for State College Area School Board of Directors. All candidates in this race have been invited to take part in a CNET interview. Election Day is Tuesday, November 7th, and you can also vote by mail. For more information, contact the Center County Office of Elections or visit centercountyvotes.gov. I'm Jeff Rushden of StateCollege.com. Thanks for joining us, and please be sure to vote. I'm Jeff Rushden of StateCollege.com, and today we're profiling the race for State College Area School Board of Directors. And with me today is Republican candidate Barry Fenchak. Barry, thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate you putting this on, these opportunities to get more information out there to the community are very important, so I appreciate it.
So, Barry, to start, tell us a little bit about your background and why you're running for State College School Board.
Okay. Well, I am a longtime resident of State College. We've been here about 40 years. My wife and I have put four children through State College School District. I came here to go to school at Penn State, got my bachelor's in chemical engineering, later my MBA in finance, and we've really been here ever since. I currently work in the investment field, but have also done a lot of work in different roles at Penn State. I've been an instructor at Penn State for about 20 years or so and currently sit on the Penn State Board of Trustees as an elected member there. So, I've been, you know, heavily involved in educational issues throughout the community. As we were discussing earlier, you know, it's just such an important pillar of the community that as community members, if we're going to get involved somewhere and try and lend a hand and lend our expertise and efforts, that's as important a place as any to do so.
What do you see as the biggest challenges facing the State College Area School District right now?
You know, as I mentioned, my wife and I put four kids through the State College School District, and we did that largely because the State College School District is, does very well in a lot of areas. It did then, and it did now. But there are, you know, certainly some significant issues. I think if we take a step back, the role of the school board or any proxy board, I think we need to make sure we understand that very well. As a member of the school board, we are a representative of all of the members of the community, and there are very disparate members within the community that all need to be accounted for. And I think we always have to be aware of that, that it's not us, that it's not personal self-interest or special interest. We are acting in a fiduciary role for the community, and in order to do that effectively, we need to understand and be very committed to the mission of the institution. And in this case, it's a pretty clear mission, right? It is, as a school board, to as effectively and efficiently as possible, make sure that we're providing a district that allows for all of our kids to achieve their highest academic potential. And I think with regard to your question about the challenges, I think the biggest, broadest challenge is to make sure we're doing that, to make sure we are always, as fiduciaries, focused on the fact that we are doing this not for ourselves and that we are doing this with a clearly defined mission that we're committed to, and our decisions reflect that.
Book bans in schools have been a topic of national discussion in recent years. What's your view on how State College manages the books that it makes available to students? And is there anything you would change about that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's an important issue because it's, and it's certainly one that's received a lot of attention. I think right now, there are about 10 million books in current print in the United States. We have within our school system and our libraries probably well under 1% of that. But that does not mean that we have banned 99% of the books out there. So, I think in order to address that problem appropriately, and I know that's the common term that we use now, book banning, that we hear, but the books aren't banned, they are certainly curated. We have to curate our libraries because we don't have space for 10 million books. And I think there's two important components to that. Our libraries have to be curated. We have librarians and professionals who are trained in that. I think those folks, after being very deliberately and substantially informed by our faculty as to what needs they have in order to successfully complete their mission of educating our kids, allows then, or they have the responsibility to essentially create the inventory for our library. And when they do that and they don't include some books, that, I don't like to use the term book banning, I think that's just a very divisive rhetorical term, it's curating the libraries. Now, in addition to that, certainly the parents of the children in our school district, who we are responsible for when they're with us, but they are their children, have concerns. And I think we sometimes view this as being a conflict, and really they're complementary, where the librarians, our faculty, create the inventory, but complementary to that, individual parents with their individual children need to have the ability to, if there are certain aspects to their children's learning materials, they need to have the ability to invoke their guidelines. If there are certain things that they feel for their child, who is their child, that they, that they want to limit or exclude. Again, that doesn't mean we're banning any books. It's, I think, should be a complementary exercise of the school putting together a good inventory and the parents having the ability, knowing their child, to be able to direct their children's education in that way.
In a more general sense, how do you think the district has done with involving families in decision-making while also letting, you know, teachers and staff do the jobs that they're trained and experienced in?
It's a difficult challenge, isn't it? I mean, we know that that's a difficult challenge. Obviously, I think we must make sure that we don't ever adopt a philosophy that parents are a nuisance to be pushed to the side while we educate our kids. They are the parent's child, they are the parent's kids. We are operating as a school district, as a proxy for those hours of the day, with a very specific mission in mind to provide an environment where those kids can achieve their maximum academic potential. So, we need to make sure that we are very robust and very deliberate with how we present opportunities for the parents to understand what's going on and to listen to their concerns. That's not always easy to do. We know that in a lot of districts, you know, parents may not be overly concerned and can be somewhat disengaged for a lot of reasons. They have busy lives too, and sometimes we don't make it easy, right? We're very fortunate in this district. We really have a lot of advantages. We are an extremely well-funded district. We live in a, like many small towns, in kind of a one-horse town, where the one- where the one horse that drives this town is education. So we have a lot of people who are very tuned in to that, who are very supportive of education, both financially and with their involvement. And we need to make sure that we, as a district, as a board, try to make those interactions as easy as possible and as robust as possible, so that they can be involved.
Do you think the district has been responsible with taxpayer money in recent years? And is there any way you think it can improve in that regard?
You know, I'm a finance guy, right? Some kind of quantitative. I like numbers with dollar signs in front of them, right? I'm comfortable working with those. As I said before, my wife and I put four children through the State College School District because we think they do a good job. They did then, they do now, in most situations, right? It was Churchill who said, right, success is never final, right? We always need to strive to get better, right? No matter where we are. But we do a lot of things very well. 10 years ago, the school district, I think, was doing a very fine job. And I think in a lot of ways, doing a fine job now. Our budget, our operating budget 10 years ago, if it had increased each year by the rate of inflation, and I think that's a reasonable number to have, right? Our enrollment has been level, it's actually been down just a bit, but we've had flat enrollment for all intents and purposes. Our operating budget, I think we should reasonably expect should increase with the rate of inflation. But over the last 10 years, our operating budget has increased by $240 million and change over and above the rate of inflation. Now, at first brush, that certainly doesn't make sense, or at least it should raise some questions. Why have our expenses, and our expenses, let's be realistic about this, that's the bill that we send to the taxpayers. That bill we send to the taxpayers, why has that increased by $240 million more than the rate of inflation in a district where enrollment is flat? And I think as a school board, as a district, we at the very least owe the community answers to the question of why. Why is that? And if we answer that, and it's reasonable and rational, the community might say, fine, good, we're great with that. But if not, then we need to take a, the most important question we can ask is why. Because why then points us to examining what we're doing, right? And if we don't ask, at least ask why, if we don't force ourselves to explain that to the community, right? And force ourselves to be deliberate and introspective on what's going on, then things get out of hand. And I think in some ways, it looks like they have. I don't see any rational, easy explanation for why we would be spending over the last 10 years $240 million more than our operating budget than what would be required to keep pace with the rate of inflation for a district that was very high-functioning to begin with. So we need, we owe the community those answers.
Should, do you believe that a teacher, staff member should be obligated to inform a parent if their child confides or otherwise expresses that they have a different gender identity?
I think, as I mentioned, you know, we have a mission, right? We have a mission to do. And that is to effectively and efficiently provide a learning environment where children can achieve their maximum potential. Sometimes we, as any institution can, we can stray a little bit and get out of our lane a little bit, for lack of a better term. We need to always remember, these are not our children. Just as a school board member, the decisions aren't to be made based on my personal feelings or any particular special interest, they're for the community at large. When we are dealing with these children, they are the parent's children, and we can never forget that. And to usurp those parents' rights, those parents' responsibilities, because they're the ones responsible for raising their child. We're responsible for educating that child. So to exclude the parent from such an important issue, and it's an issue where, quite frankly, as a school, it really is not in our purview. We don't have the experience, the knowledge, or the accountability to take that task on. That's the parents and the family's task. So, I'm sorry, that's a very, very long answer to a very, very short question. No, the parents should not be excluded in that situation.
Well, we have about 30 seconds left, so I'll give you this opportunity to share anything else you would like to with the voters.
My goodness, it goes fast, doesn't it?
It does.
Again, I, just real quickly, really from the heart, I appreciate that you guys, you know, take this on. I think as a school district, as a school board, there's three things that we really need if we're going to be successful. We need school board members who, number one, understand the role of proxy governance, that we're acting for the community, not for ourselves, that have a thorough understanding and a commitment to the mission of the school district and that we have, we bring skills to the table that will be helpful in analyzing and evaluating the challenges we face so that we can arrive at more beneficial solutions. I think I bring that to the table. If I didn't, I wouldn't want to run for the school board. It's too darn important a position, it's too big a responsibility that I don't want anybody on that school board that doesn't understand the role, that isn't committed to the mission, and doesn't have skills to bring to the table to help us overcome the challenges we're going to face.
Well, thanks so much for joining us today, Barry.
Thank you, Jeff. Again, I really appreciate it.
We've been talking with Barry Fenchak, Republican candidate for State College Area School Board of Directors. All candidates in this race have been invited to take part in a CNET interview. Election Day is Tuesday, November 7th, and you can also vote by mail. For more information, contact the Center County Office of Elections or visit centercountenvotes.gov. I'm Jeff Rushden of StateCollege.com. Thanks for joining us, and please be sure to vote. Hello, and welcome to CNET's 2023 election coverage. I'm Jeff Rushden of StateCollege.com, and today we're profiling the race for State College Area School Board of Directors. With me is Democratic candidate Dan Colby. Dan, thanks for joining us.
Thanks for having me.
So Dan, tell us a little bit about your background and why you're running for State College Area School Board.
Absolutely. So born and raised in central Pennsylvania, just over across the mountain in Phillipsburg. You know, have a longstanding history in business. It's, you know, it's primarily been my career throughout life is different, varying levels of business management and sales. But no, I'm excited to be here. I'm excited to be running for State College Area School Board and really push to make a difference and continue a lot of the good work that the board's been doing.
What do you think are the biggest challenges facing the State College School District right now?
You know, when you think of challenges, there's always a couple ways to spin that. The board and the district has been doing a fantastic job with, with making sure that all kids are feeling valued and safe and ensuring that they're receiving a quality education, right? I think one of the challenges is just making sure that that continues to happen, making sure that we're, you know, implementing policies or protecting policies that are already in place and keeping the educational level and the comfort of our students in mind as we do that. You know, the safety and education of the students is the number one priority and should be for the community.
Book bans in schools have been a topic of national discussion for the last few years. What is your view on how the State College School District manages the books that it makes available? And is there anything you would change about that?
Yeah, I mean, thanks for the question. I think this is, you know, like you said, a national trend with certain groups trying to ban certain books and so on and so forth. I believe that, one, we need to trust the educators, the librarians, the people that have gone to school and are educated in these subject matters. We need to trust them on what's in the library. As a parent with a child in the district, it matters to me what books are in the library. I want him to be able to go in that library and find reading materials that potentially reflect who he is or help him understand what he enjoys or who he is as a person, right? Everybody deserves to be represented in that library. So I don't think we need to ever go down a path of removing any of the books in the library within the district. We need to trust the educators and the librarians that they're going to guide the children towards books that are appropriate for them and that they're going to help them find those appropriate books.
In general, how do you think the district has done in involving families in decision-making processes while at the same time allowing, like you said, teachers and staff to do the jobs that they're trained and experienced in?
You know, from my personal experience, the district, and I can speak to Park Forest Elementary specifically, has done a fantastic job with keeping us informed of anything that's going on at school, whether it be events or, you know, God forbid, there's an incident at school of any type, you know, bullying or anything like that. They've done a fantastic job. I will also say it is not up to only the school to keep the parents involved. The parents need to have that want to be involved as well. If I'm curious about something in my child's education or something that's going on at school or want more information, I have no issue sending an email, you know, picking up my phone and calling and asking those questions. So in a nutshell, you cannot put the school involving the parents on just the school. The parents need to be involved and make that effort as well. It's a two-way street.
Right. The district right now is doing a district-wide facilities master plan, which will, you know, major part of that is going to be Park Forest Middle School and probably building a new school there.
Yep.
Are there any other facilities needs that you see across the district that you think need to be addressed?
I mean, if you follow the budget process and you listen to some of the master plan and the classroom and student allocation within the district, we're going to have to do something with Mountain Innie Elementary, add some classrooms there to make sure we alleviate some of that and keep classroom sizes within a reasonable margin. So the educators aren't overwhelmed with how many kids they have in their class. They have the space to effectively teach, and the kids have the space to learn and grow. So I think that's another project that's going to be on the roadmap is Mountain Innie Elementary.
Do you think the district has been a responsible steward of taxpayer funds in recent years? And do you see any areas that it can improve in that regard?
So nobody ever wants to have their taxes raised, right? But there's a cost of doing business and there's a cost associated with providing a certain level of education, right? Unfortunately, in our state, the majority of the funding comes from our taxes, our local taxes here. So I think to this point, they have been good stewards of our tax dollars. They're doing what's needed to be done to make sure that all of our children have opportunities. They have, you know, the books they need, they have the supplies and the technology they need to learn and gain that education to be responsible, valued citizens as they grow up.
Do you think there needs to be changes to funding formulas or oversight of charter schools? And why or why not?
Yeah, so charter schools, there's definitely, you know, a benefit to them in some areas. But one area is the funding that, okay, so in a nutshell, yes, they need to look at the way charter schools are funded. And I think we talked about this in the spring. Charter schools need to have the same requirements as a public school in order to receive the same money a public school does, right? So when the district has to pay out per student, there needs to be a set of requirements for that charter school to be able to test these kids in the same way, to provide for these kids in the same way that a public school will. So yes, that needs reformed.
Do you support or oppose school voucher legislation? And why?
School voucher, again, I think that directs the funds away from where they're needed in public education, right? Thankfully, we live in State College where our tax base helps really support a great school. But you look at places like, you know, across the mountain, Phillipsburg or Bald Eagle, they're not in horrible shape, but they have a lot less of a tax base to collect from. And I think school voucher programs could really hurt schools like that. And yes, I'm running for State College Area School Board, but I believe that as a candidate for any school board, we need to care about public education across the board, not just for our individual school district.
Do you believe a teacher or staff or other staff member should be obligated to inform a parent if their child expresses or confides that they're transgender?
If the parent is providing a welcoming, loving home for their children, they shouldn't have to worry about what the child is saying to a teacher, a staff member, guidance counselor, whoever it may be at the school, right? There's also the rights of the child. They need a safe place to be able to talk to somebody that is, has no skin in the game, right? That will listen to them and provide resources for them to grow and feel comfortable in who they are, right? LGBT youth face one of the highest suicide rates out of all youth, right? And we need to be able to have those conversations or be able to direct those students to resources within the community to do that. So should parents be involved? Yes, but parents should be involved from home, and it shouldn't come as a surprise if they mention something like that, if they're providing a warm and welcoming environment at home.
The school district is, for Center County, a pretty geographically and demographically diverse area. You know, how will you make sure that you're attuned to the various needs of these different communities within the larger community?
So, you know, I always laughed, growing up, everybody thought State College, it's perfect over there. It's, you know, their school district's great, it's da-da-da-da-da, so on and so forth. When you actually get in the community, we are very lucky. We have a lot of things that the outlying communities don't. But what people from the outside don't always understand when they look in at the district is, you're right, it's very diverse. You have different socioeconomic classes, different races, different, just a whole slew of differences, right? And it's tough to keep on top of that. It really is. You know, I had a conversation recently about some trainings that staff have gone through in relation to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I think that's something that needs to continue to happen and potentially expand. So staff, students, all understand that everybody comes from a different background. When you're in those classrooms or those school buildings, that everybody is treated with respect regardless of the color of their skin, their sexual orientation, how much money they have or don't have, right? So I would love to see that expand in some way within our district just to continue to build and foster that environment.
We have about a minute left, so I will give you this opportunity to share anything else you would like with the voters.
Absolutely. So again, thank you for the time here today. And thank you to everybody that went out and voted for us in the primary. Very much appreciate it. It's been a lot of work to get out there and talk to all the voters and just really get our message out there, right? When you go to the election, your election locations on November 7th, remember to vote for the sensible candidates that want to make sure that all students, teachers, staff, any type of educators are included, feel welcomed, and we can continue to grow our district in a positive way.
Great. Well, thanks so much for joining us today, Dan.
Thank you.
We've been talking with Dan Colby, Democratic candidate for State College Area School Board. All candidates in this race have been invited to take part in a CNET interview. Election Day is Tuesday, November 7th, and you can also vote by mail. For more information, contact the Center County Office of Elections or visit centercountenvotes.gov. I'm Jeff Rushden of StateCollege.com. Thanks for joining us, and please be sure to vote. Hello, and welcome to CNET's 2023 election coverage. I'm Jeff Rushden of StateCollege.com, and today we're profiling the race for State College Area School District Board of Directors. With me now is Republican candidate John Kretschek. John, thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me, Jeff.
So John, tell us about So, John, tell us about your background and why you're running for State College School Board.
Okay. Well, I am running, I got the Republican nomination. I'm in, I've been independent registered since I was 18. I like to consider myself in the middle, like to to look at things logically. I'm a civil engineer. I have managed projects at PennDOT for over 15 years. I've worked there for a total of 21 years. And managing projects, you have different groups that you deal with, different people from different design services units. So you're dealing with consultants who are designing the project, you're managing what's going on, you're dealing with different units, like environmental unit, right away unit, and you're you're trying to keep everybody on the same page and at the same time produce what you want to do, what what your management wants. So, I mean, I think a lot of those similarities in that those those things that I deal with at work would would be advantageous to a school board position.
Right. What do you think are the biggest challenges facing the State College School District?
Biggest challenges? I think I think we have, in our school, I think we have a culture that is semi-toxic. And I think that we have, I think we have some issues with violence, which I don't think are acknowledged. I've had, one of the reasons I ran for school board is people were telling me about stuff that they were dealing with in the school. So so violence, which could include physical assaults, sexual assaults, poor learning environment, teachers as well as former teachers were telling me about the learning environment, these different things. And as you look into it, you know, people were telling me they're seeing in the high school fights, like two fights a week, maybe more sometimes. And you look at the reportable fights that were that our district reported to the Department of Education for the state, and it was five fights for the whole year. So why, you know, if you're not if you're not acknowledging the issues in a school, you aren't you aren't going to be able to find solutions to solve them. And I'm someone who I want to look into these issues, and I want to develop some ways to come up with some solutions that actually work.
Right. Book bans in schools have been a topic of national discussion now for a couple of years.
Absolutely.
What's your view on how State College Area School District manages, you know, the books that it makes available? And are there any changes that you would make?
Yeah, I think, so I am against book bans. I think educational material and books have value even when they have opposing viewpoints. I think that I, and when you mentioned State College, I mean, you've seen on the on the front page of the CDT, some of this discussion about about book bans and some of the books that may be inappropriate. And I think that when somebody goes to a book fair, they, like the school held book fairs, where Scholastic Books is there, they end up, they end up, some, a child picks up a book and goes to purchase it, and they go to purchase it, oh, you need your parental, you need your parental permission to purchase this book. I think this is an opportunity, like we have rating systems on on movies, we have, you know, but but there's pictures in some of these books that you wouldn't allow a child to wear on a T-shirt, but you'll let them look at it in a book. So I think there needs to be, I think people, both sides need to come together. And I think we need to look for some solutions. This is an opportunity to involve parents and develop a system where where parental involvement can be included in checking out certain books. But honestly, I don't know that that's as much of an issue as certain viewpoints not being represented in the library. We have, our our library policy is that that equal, you know, viewpoints from both sides are supposed to be represented. And I don't know that that's always the case. I personally believe that whatever side people feel about on an issue, usually reading an opposing side is either going to confirm your belief and and make your make you stronger in your beliefs because you learn how to dispute them, or it's going to make you think, well, maybe some things about that side are okay and are right. So, you know, I think that I look to increase the viewpoints being, not just political viewpoints, but viewpoints on different different things. I look to increase the amount of books, and I would not look to ban any books. However, I want to, you know, state law requires that we that we keep appropriate material in the age of certain age children, like below 16, for example. So I would want to make sure we can keep those books in the library, but appropriate material and parental involvement, those two things I think are important.
How well, in general, do you think State College Area has done in recent years with involving families in in decision making, while at the same time allowing teachers and staff to do the jobs that they're trained to do?
Personally, I had two children in the district for five years, and I think the communication below average. I think we can do a lot better. And I'd like to, I'd like to see, I think, I think keeping parents involved, parents' guardians, keeping them involved in education is important. And there is an impact that a child has, a student, when when their parent is involved. And it's a different way to motivate kids and a different way to, just like with the book thing, if a parent's okay with their kid reading that book, and it's it's legal, then that's fine. And the same thing with with the parental involvement. I just think that, I mean, it transcends a bunch of different issues. And it's it's essential, I think.
Right now, the district is doing a district wide facilities master plan, and that's obviously going to involve something with Park Forest Middle School, probably rebuilding it.
Yeah.
Are there any particular facilities needs that you see across the district that you think need to be addressed?
Well, I mean, we, yes, we we have, you know, we have issues that people that were, we have a lot of different people with different backgrounds and a lot of different belief systems. And we're trying to, as you try to accommodate a lot of people, we look into, you know, we're looking into facilities for for bathrooms that are, that make people feel comfortable. And I'm not saying, you know, people who have, trans people, for example, like if you're making people feel uncomfortable, the people going in to use the bathroom and some of the people using the bathroom, maybe we could look into some single use, more single use bathrooms, and maybe even eventually eliminating eliminating gender bathrooms as, why do people need to use bathrooms with other people? I mean, I don't know. But that's one thing. But as you mentioned Park Forest Middle School, I think that the schools, there's also Mountain Inn Elementary, which they're talking about a 15, potentially a $15 million project with that. And I think the challenges are that, you know, when you look into a construction project, like I've been managing design projects, capital funded design, capital design projects for 15 years, when you look at these things, we always go through a selection process. A selection process is big because you can ask consultants questions, and consultants will come in with very, very good ideas. Some of those ideas save us money. And, you know, the school board, I think it was August 18th or 21st, the school board meeting, they, the sitting members voted on approving the master plan. And and I get that, approving approving Crabtree, which is a consultant, to go forward with the master plan, and they would be producing it. But they also wanted to to have Mountain Inn Elementary designed by them. And they mentioned that at some point, Park Forest, which is maybe a $65 million project plus, maybe maybe more, but that that project, they could decide to go away from that consultant at a later time if they needed to. The problem is, is that they're they're basing, they're basing their decision on the relationship with the consultant, not the innovative ideas. And innovative, in my experience with consultant selections, the innovative ideas that you get when you read about that help you during the design of the project, even if you continue to go move forward with Crabtree. Going through the selection process, you can ask for cost savings ideas, ideas that may decrease future maintenance, and innovative ideas. And you may get a building type that saves you 5% or 10%. You may, you may have a contractor suggest something that really saves us a lot of money. So I would urge the sitting school board to go through a selection process. If you, I mean, at the at the August meeting, it was mentioned that that could cost us three to six months. Well, if that costs us three to six months, then, and we don't want to waste that time. It should have been brought up six months ago. However, and I understand that, you know, the board members aren't engineers, they don't deal with this as much as I do. But that's why I think I would be a valuable member to a board. When you understand these processes and you work with them all the time, you can go in, I can go in and say, hey, we need to look at this ahead of time. I want to go through this selection process, so we need to look at this now. And just some of that knowledge, I mean, I think that that would make me a good fit for being on the board.
Right. Do you think the district has been responsible, responsible with taxpayer funds? And do you think there are ways that that could be improved?
I do think that there's ways that that can be improved. I think they try. I mean, I think anybody who goes, tries to be on a school board, it's a non-paid position, it's a volunteer position. They have the best interest in mind. I do have other ideas than the current board. And and the people, for the most part, I believe the people I'm running against, at least the incumbents. But, I mean, we spent $75,000 searching for a superintendent and hired the assistant. We spent $50,000 to pay for AP tests. And I think, you know, first time, we already had paid for lower income students from lower income households. We are, we were already paying for theirs. But I think the numbers were 46% is is how many people were taking the test, and they wanted to get the number to 54%. So they pay $50,000 to pay for anybody regardless of income they're paying to take the test. And the the, I mean, those, that kind of money, you know, it doesn't sound like much, but as you look more into the budget, you see more and more of those things. And, and, you know, the reason they're, they want to spend that money is because, you know, our school rankings in the state are based on how many people take our AP test. They're based on how how well students do. So they want people to take the test. Those credits aren't always usable in college. I took some AP Calculus and didn't use it in college because the the calculus, I had to take it, I still had to take a test to place out of it. And then in addition to that, it there, there were some certain specific things in there that that they claimed that they taught. And I think colleges are less and less giving people the credits for it. So, I mean, I feel like, you know, we need to be careful with taxpayer money everywhere. And I think that if, you know, we have a budget of $188 million, if we had, if we had increased, since 2011, if we had increased our budget equalling inflation, just to the amount of inflation, we would have spent $246 million less than what we spent over that 12 year period. So I believe that we can do better. And there's a lot of things that we can cut and still increase the the results. I think that we can increase through through increasing the learning environment. I think that we really can do a better job.
Right. We are unfortunately out of time, but is there anything you would like to share quickly with the voters before we go?
Um, I think that, I think that I would like to see the school implement Rachel's challenge. It's a, it's an anti, Rachel Scott was the first student in the Columbine massacre. And she created this anti-bullying initiative. And I think it's a preventative intervention. And I believe that it helps kids feel connected and that they belong. And I think that that, I think that something like that could be good. I think we need to build our culture or in our learning environment. And I think we can do a much better job. And if anybody wants to hear from me, you can go to the page, or you can email John, my name is spelled K R A J C O V I C for scazd@gmail.com. You know, I'd love to hear any comments and discussion.
Right. Well, thank you so much for joining us, Saden.
Thank you.
We've been talking with John Kretschewicz, Republican candidate for State College Area School Board of Directors. All candidates in this race have been invited to take part in a CNN interview. Election Day is Tuesday, November 7th, and you can also vote by mail. For more information, contact the Center County Office of Elections or visit centercountevotes.gov. I'm Jeff Rushden of StateCollege.com. Thanks for joining us, and please get out to vote. Hello, and welcome to CNets 2023 election coverage. I'm Jeff Rushden of StateCollege.com. And today we're profiling the race for the State College Area School District Board of Directors. And with me today is Democratic candidate Aaron Miller. Aaron, thanks for joining us.
Hey, thanks for having me.
So, Aaron, to start, can you tell us a little bit about your background and why you're running for school board?
Yeah, absolutely. I am an associate teaching professor in the Human Development and Family Studies Department of Penn State. I am a State College native, so I'm a graduate of the State College Area School District as well. A lot of my background and expertise is in child development, adolescent development, and education research. And I would say the primary reason that I decided to run is is I felt that that was an important perspective to bring to the school board table. I also thought, you know, I was looking for an opportunity to really volunteer and and do something within my community. And this seemed like the best option.
Right. What do you think are the biggest challenges facing the State College School District right now?
That's a great question. You know, I will say, right now, probably the, well, one of the biggest hurdles we we got through, and that, and everybody's, you know, we got through it very well, was the the teacher, the contract for teachers with with the union. So that that we've kind of, that was something that I think in the spring, there was a lot of work going into that. In terms of our current challenges, I know one of them that I hear a lot about is transportation. We've had a lot of trouble hiring enough bus drivers to keep the buses running in a timely manner, and to keep the kids getting to school on time. I think another issue that we always face is, you know, ongoing budget pressures from inflation. I think it's, you know, in the food service program, I think, you know, just the the general cost of of the cost of construction, right? We have building projects coming up. And I think that's probably one of the biggest pressures that we have. We have to build a new middle school. And, you know, how do we deal with the rising costs of that?
Mm-hmm. That actually leads to another question I have, which is, the district is starting or has started a district wide facilities master plan, and the Park Forest Middle School rebuild probably is going to be a major part of that. Are there any other particular facilities needs that you see throughout the district?
Yeah. So as a matter of fact, the district facilities master plan, portions of that were presented, they have been discussed at the meetings in the, you know, the last several meetings. The first project that's actually slated to take place before Park Forest Middle School is in addition to Mountain Inn Elementary School, which is also very sorely needed. That's a a number of schools we see are at capacity. And Mountain Inn is probably the one that that is clear, most clearly above capacity. So we have to add classroom space to Mountain Inn. Yeah, I think that and Park Forest and the facilities master plan are kind of the two biggest projects that are that are coming up.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Book bans have been a topic of national discussion for the past couple of years now. What's your What's your view on how State College Area School District manages the books that it makes available to students? And is there anything you would change about that?
Yeah, it's a great question. Again, you know, so I'm very satisfied with the way the district manages its libraries. I'm very satisfied with the way that it teaches literacy. I'm, I'm actually pretty satisfied with the way that they handle what information is available to kids. I will say my perspective on things like book bans is that we don't all agree on what literature we think should be available and what should be in, in, in our schools. I think that's pretty clear. But I leave it up to experts, right? I leave it up to the librarians. I leave it up to, you know, the people who have, who have made a career out of, you know, this, this is what they do. And I think honoring that expertise and recognizing that, you know, I, I'll say, you know, we've had this discussion about particular books. And my initial reaction was to say, you know, with certain books I'd never seen before, I'm like, well, I don't know. I don't know if I think, and I had to go get more information. I had to get more perspective on that book. And I think if we do that, we're going to end up in a much better place. We're going to be much more successful with people, I think, collectively feeling like, you know, we have a library system that, you know, that provides a good breadth of knowledge while understanding that we don't all have to agree on it.
In general, how do you think the district has done in recent years with involving parents in, in decision-making while also, you know, allowing teachers and staff to do the jobs that they have experienced and are trained to do?
Yeah, I think actually they've done a, a great job of it. And I can say in the past year, since I'm not on the board, I've been at community meetings as a community member. I've had opportunities to make my comments. Just this morning, they had a, a board coffee out in the community at Good Day Cafe. And I got, I got, I was one of a couple of community members who was there. We got to talk about, you know, what issues we thought were really important. So from my perspective, I think the district has done a great job of keeping parents involved. Now, whether or not there's more that we could do, I think there's always more that we can do in, in making sure that we're, we're staying connected to, to our parents.
Do you think that the district has been responsible with taxpayer funds? And do you see any areas that could be improved?
So I will say this is kind of my, my first round of understanding the budget process. But I, you know, I would like to say first and foremost, I think that the, they have excellent administrators. And I think they have somebody in place, Mr. Randy Brown, who does a fantastic job of putting together the budget. I think he looks at it from a somewhat, with a conservative eye. He wants to make sure that we're using the money wisely. He wants to make sure that we're never overextended and overstretched. You know, I think the fact that we have a budget surplus, you know, I, some people would say, you know, that means that taxes are too high. I actually think that that is what protects us when inflation goes up. That's what allows us to fit things in when, when we recognize a need. So I think we've done an outstanding job as a district of handling those resources and that money, which is really important because we have such a big budget.
Do you see any need for changes to charter school funding formulas or oversight?
Yes, absolutely. That's a big one for me. In addition to being a candidate, I have really followed the conversation statewide about education funding. So first and foremost, you know, education funding, we know the current funding formula is considered out of alignment with Pennsylvania's constitution. So we already know that school funding is inequitable. We already know that it's a problem. When it comes to charter schools, that is taking public money out of that, that public district and that, and that public community. I, I think some districts, that's not a huge problem. Other districts, you know, because of inequitable funding, yeah, I, I think it's worth looking at charter school reform. Charter schools are, they're a part of, you know, Pennsylvania law. They're a part of the education system. But I think holding all charter schools, especially cyber charters, by the way, holding them accountable for the same things that our public schools are, are currently held accountable for would be a really important step in the right direction.
And do you support or oppose school voucher legislation or similar legislation?
I would say 100% I do not support that at all. I think that is a big misuse of taxpayer funds. I think education itself, and especially public education, is, it's a public good, right? And whether you choose to access that public good for your family or not, that's a personal choice. But I think taking that money to, you know, you, you wouldn't ask, you, you wouldn't ask Penn Dot to pay to have your driveway paved, right? You wouldn't, you wouldn't ask them to, to pay for that sort of private choice. So I, I think that applies here. I don't, I, I don't agree with school vouchers at all.
How important is it to you to keep tax increases low, recognizing that taxes, that real estate taxes are the biggest chunk of the school district's budget? You know, and, and how do you prioritize, you know, keeping low tax increases while at the same time, you know, maintaining or even improving services?
Yeah, I think that's probably the, the biggest challenge that, that boards face. And really, it's, it's probably the place where they have the biggest impact on school funding and on the community generally. I, you know, as a property owner, I, I recognize how hard it is sometimes to, to face a tax increase. I certainly don't like them. I say like, do I want to pay more in taxes? Probably not. But I also recognize the value added by increasing, and I'm, and I don't want to say increasing the budget for no reason, right? I, I, I think we need that tax base and we need to be able to balance how much, how much we're spending, right? And, and spending wisely. And we, you know, we already talked about budget-related things. But I think because the district is spending wisely, you know, if, if a tax increase is necessary, especially in the last couple of years, we haven't had one, I'm open to that possibility. But I think, I think we need to be very careful about how big that tax increase is and, and why we're making that, that decision.
Do you believe that if a student confides or otherwise expresses a different gender identity, that a teacher should be obligated to tell their parents?
So let me, let me think about this question kind of from a different perspective. I, I like to think of kids themselves as also having some rights. And certainly in the medical community, teenagers have certain rights with, you know, based on HIPAA law, right? So they're, they're able to have conversations with their doctor that aren't necessarily revealed to their parents. Do I think that parents shouldn't be involved? Absolutely not. I think the way that question is framed sometimes misses the point that the goal of every counselor who's talking to kids is to have as many people involved in their, you know, in, in their care circle as, as to have. So I don't think the goal is ever to exclude parents. I think the goal is to make sure that kids are safe first and foremost. But I, I suspect if you ask counselors or teachers, they would all agree. They would, they prefer to have parents involved. They, they prefer to include them rather than exclude them.
So we've got about 20 seconds left and I'll turn it over to you to share anything else you'd like with the voters.
Okay, great. Well, I, you know, I, I really have appreciated my time as a candidate this year. I appreciated all the support in the primary. I do hope that you will vote for Slate for State. I think if you choose, you know, really reasonable and sensible candidates, you continue to have excellent schools. That's kind of what I tell voters.
Well, thanks so much for joining us, Erin.
Hey, thank you.
We've been talking with Erin Miller, Democratic candidate for State College Area School District Board of Directors. All candidates in this race have been invited to take part in a CNET interview. Election day is Tuesday, November 7th, and you can also vote by mail. For more information, contact the Center County Office of Elections or visit centercountenvotes.gov. I'm Jeff Rushden of StateCollege.com. Thanks for joining us and please be sure to vote. Hello and welcome to CNET's 2023 election coverage. I'm Jeff Rushden of StateCollege.com. And today we're profiling the race for State College Area School Board of Directors. With me now is Republican candidate Michelle Young. Thanks, Michelle, for joining us today.
Thanks for having me.
So Michelle, to start, can you tell us a little bit about your background and why you decided to run for school board?
Yeah, so I'm a retired naval officer. I spent 22 years in the Navy. And, you know, one of the, one of the things that I really enjoyed about being in the Navy, especially as I became more senior, was the mentoring of our sailors, the training of our sailors, building and developing environments for them that allow them to succeed. And you do much more of that as you, as more senior that you get. And so I retired to, to raise my kids. And I felt like there was, I had enough experience and knowledge that I could participate in the conversation about how to educate our children. And then I felt like I could be of service to a younger generation in addition to raising my own family. And I wanted to be able to instill in some of our young students in our, in, in the district, some of those core principles that I found to be successful. And I think that many people find to be successful. Core principles like critical thinking and also core values of honesty, perseverance, gratitude, and compassion. I think that when students have a lot of those strong characteristics, I think it does them well as they leave, you know, as they leave school and, and go out into the world. So that's one of the reasons why I was running. So when I decided to participate in the district, you know, the first way that a lot of families do that or a lot of parents do that is through the PTO. So I joined the Ferguson Township Elementary PTO and I served on that board for five years. And then I also started attending school board meetings. So I've been attending school board meetings for, I would say, over seven years now. That's a lot of meetings. And what I found was that I started to become a little bit disillusioned with the increasingly limited opportunities for parents and stakeholders to participate and have a voice in the district. And when I was standing, attending school board meetings, what I started to realize and in having conversations with school board members along the way, I started to realize that the board members had essentially the same or very similar opinions, positions, ideology. And that, you know, like many parents during that COVID time, I was also taken aback by some of the things that I saw, that I was seeing in the district. And so I decided to run for school board in order to increase the diversity of thoughts and opinions and ideology, to give much of our disillusioned families a voice on the board and to take action to increase and formalize real partnership between the district and our community and families.
What do you think are the biggest challenges facing the State College School District right now?
Yeah, some of the biggest challenges that we have, I think that fiscal accountability is a challenge that we have. I had mentioned previously that the way that, the way that the district does some of their budgeting, they like to practice in what I call approving long-term expenditures using one-time funding, like grants or unexpected or extra funding from the state or from the federal government. And this was done on a large scale with the $5 million that we received from Biden, the ESSER funding. You know, a lot of that funding was allocated to expenditures that were not single-use, one-time purchase expenditures. All of them had tails, all of them were annual expenditures. And what the board did was they just baked it into the budget, as one of my fellow candidates, Barry Fenchek, likes to use that term. And after that funding expired, it was two-year money. After that funding expired, we continued to fund those activities and we raised taxes to do it. And when you approved those, when they approved those expenditures, they never asked, how are we going to fund this money? What offsets are there going to be to, to, to pay for these items? And where were the controls? They often do that. We got this grant money, we're going to start this pilot project, but they never treat it like a pilot project. You know, pilot project, paid for the year, and then you have to come back. You have to report out how well it did. And then you have to figure out how you're going to pay for it. But you also have to figure out, is it a need for the mission of the district or is it a want? And then how are you going to fund it? Are you making a very deliberate decision to raise taxes? Or are you going to find an offset in the district? So I think that we have some financial accountability problems there. In addition, we have the largest generation of youth suffering from anxiety and depression. Okay, the Surgeon General has come out and spoken about it. The CDC has come out, has come out and spoken about it. And I think that the district's efforts to try and combat some of the, some of those, those issues like the hiring of mental health clinicians, et cetera, I think that it didn't, I don't think it turned out to be as successful as they thought it did. I think that by hiring those three conditions, clinicians, actual psychologists at $350,000 and they helped 60, 70, 80 kids out of a school district of seven, of 6,700 kids. And I think that they're not looking in other, out-of-the-box thinking. And I will tell you that you will not turn this around. You will not help solve the problem that our children have with anxiety and depression without partnering with families. It's just not going to happen. You must partner with families. You must partner with parents in order to help resolve these issues. The other part that they won't address, which the Surgeon General even spoke about, was social media. What is the district doing about social media within the district? Cell phone use with, with students in the district? Why are our teachers continuing to have homework assignments that use social media? Why isn't there a push? There was a push for gun safety at home, but we have no push, no discussion, no public activity and no overall district program to reduce cell phone use in the school and to reduce social media use or to warn and, and preach about the dangers of social media. And so I think that, you know, those are issues that we have, teacher recruiting and retention. I have spoken previously about that. I think that, yes, some of it is paid. Our, our teachers, you know, in general are underpaid, but I think it's more than that. I think that there are teachers out there that will happily take a smaller salary if the environment that they're working in is enjoyable, if the environment that they're working in is healthy and not hostile, if they feel like they belong, if they feel like their opinions and thoughts are valued. And I'm not sure that that's what's going on in the district. And in addition, I think that the district does have a trust issue with families and, and community members and other community members. And I haven't seen really anything that the district is doing to address that issue. I think that some of the issues that you see being brought up at school board meetings, people talking into the, into the press, I think that, you know, some of the, the hostility, I think that you see from families are all based on a, on a distrust of the district. And I really haven't seen a lot of efforts for the district to help heal that, that breach.
So I think it's safe to say that you feel the district could be doing a better job of involving families in decision-making? When, so over the past few years nationally, the, the topic of book bans in schools has, you know, been a issue of national discussion. What's your view on how State College Area School District manages it, the books it makes available? And are there any changes you would make to that?
I'm so glad that you asked that question because I, I think that was just a headlining article in the CDT, as a matter of fact. You know, there is a lot of rhetoric and name-calling that doesn't help us have a complex and nuanced discussion. I see this, I see this as another opportunity for the school district to partner with parents and, and the community for a viable solution and what's key here, a transparent process. I have to be honest in that book banning was not initially on my radar. This was not a topic that, 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 a topic that I was running on, frankly, and, and not one of the reasons why I was running. And so the way I work stuff like that is I resolved that I had to do my own fact-finding about what was going, what the district libraries policies were, what process existed, who was in charge of curating the libraries, what guidelines did they follow? So I met with a district administrator in charge of the libraries. And I also met with, at the same time, in the same meeting, with the district's library coordinator. And we had a nice And we had a nice, long meeting, it was a discussion, a very good discussion. And libraries, librarians curate libraries based on guidelines provided to them and their own judgment based on their expertise and education for age-appropriate material. But this is also key, for each age group and not for individual students. I, as a parent, know what is age-appropriate for my student, and that will be different than what another parent decides is age-appropriate for their student. These differences in opinions must be respected. I think the district acknowledges this. Yet there's so much more work to be done to improve this process and make it more transparent and easier for parents to partner in their kid's education. You know, I've requested to meet with this group again, we plan to meet again, and we hope to discuss a way ahead. And during this research, I also came to the conclusion that there aren't enough books in the district and at the high school. As a candidate, we campaign on viewpoint diversity, and I'd like to see more books in our libraries with more perspectives. For example, the high school has Ibram X. Kendi's books, including How to Be an Anti-Racist, and other authors that support critical social justice. But they hold only one of over 40 books that Thomas Sowell has written. He, or any books by John McWhorter, Robert Woodson, Glenn Lowry, and Ian Rowe, all with authors that have opposing viewpoints. And that's supposed to be part of the district's library book policy, is to represent multiple perspectives of subjects and various viewpoints.
The district is going through a district-wide facilities master plan, which obviously will involve something with Park Forest Middle School, but are there other areas of the district that you see particular facilities needs?
So I've been tracking this, and in regards to that, I do want to make a few, a few statements about the master plan. I do have some concerns that it's been 10 years since we did an RFP for, for an architect. I think that, I do agree that relationships matter, and I think having good relationships matter and having good experience, improved experience. But I also think that the more information that you have, the better off you are making, in making those decisions. So I don't, I think that there should be, there should have been more discussion about whether or not they should have requested or pursued on RFP process in regards to the architect. I took a look at actually the boundaries and attendance study that was done by Crabtree and followed that very closely. And in looking at that, you can see where there are some, definitely some inefficiencies in, in the district. I think they're addressing a lot of that with the Mount Nittany Elementary expansion, and also with, I'm assuming, you know, what's priority of the project is the renovation of Park Forest Middle School. But I also agree with what they're doing in regards to moving around assets to, to fill, to fill spaces that are not being needed, to include the special needs departments and some of those Hartz programs and stuff, and moving those Coral Street. What I don't think that the board considered, and they should have, was discussion on redistricting. You have two schools that are underutilized, you have Ferguson Elementary and Coral Street that are underutilized. And, you know, taking a look at the district boundaries and redistricting should have been a discussion. Now, that's not popular, it's not popular. People don't want to move their kids, they don't want to think about having to change schools, or, you know, future kids changing schools. I said, but you, but that doesn't mean you don't have the discussion. And that's one of the issues that I see with this board, is that they don't, where they say they like to have the hard discussions, it often doesn't happen. Because having those hard discussions means that you have to talk about, as a viability, unpopular opinions. And redistricting is an unpopular opinion, and I think that they could have maybe not expanded Mount Nittany as much as they are by doing just a little bit of redistricting.
We're out of time, so I'll give you a few seconds if you'd like to share anything else you'd like with the voters.
I do. I'd like to talk about representation very quickly. I think community members that are socially and economically liberal are well-represented on the board and well-represented on the slate for state candidates. Those community members that are more socially and economically conservative are not represented well, or if at all, with the current makeup of the school board. If this community and this school district truly believes inclusivity and belonging are important measures of engagement and innovation, then it makes sense to ensure that all community members feel like they belong and not just the majority. Voters have the best opportunity now to diversify this school board by voting for myself, Barry Fenchak, Nathan Bish, and John Kretchovich.
Thank you so much for joining us today, Michelle.
Thank you.
We've been talking with Michelle Young, Republican candidate for State College Area School Board of Directors. All candidates in this race have been invited to take part in a CNET interview. Election day is Tuesday, November 7th, and you can also vote by mail. For more information, visit CenterCountyVotes.gov. I'm Jeff Rushden of StateCollege.com. Thanks for joining us, and please be sure to vote.